To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Make your seat. We'll call the members, please.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Heron, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Addington at large.
Here.
Thanks ma'am. Had to see everybody this morning. Next item is approve the agenda. Do we have anything to add to? We will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Subtle, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
All served.
Mr. Jeter, second. Any discussion? On the favor of the vote, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, item five, approve the maintenance from our July sixth meeting. Hope you had a chance to look at it. There's so many to approve the maintenance from July sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Heron made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bricky, second. Any discussion? On the favor of the vote, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, assist expression period. I'll read this little short statement. We'll go into that. Assistant expression period is upon the meeting. Anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from in the county, and or what organization you may represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, have them a silence.
They have not.
We have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns to speak your business. Any action will be considered after the closing of this expression. So with that, we'll go into assist expression. Anyone have anything for us this morning?
Good morning. My name is Richard Gilmore, six oh five Ballfield Road, Gate City. I was here at the last meeting. And I'm pleading my case for help in the Midway community, and I guess I'm back again. I do have a little bit more information since I was here the last time. The two roads that we're wanting help with is Ballfield Road and Hale Springs Road, which together form a loop from Midway Road back to Midway Road. And I failed to mention that school bus runs those roads twice a day. And today, the school bus is going to have trouble getting up down those roads. For two reasons. One is that we've had a lot of rain and the pandemic rains. Our roads are destroyed. And there's a lot of vegetation growing out over the road now. A gentleman below me owns a camper with one of those air conditioners up on the top, and he's been begging VDOT to do something. He can't get out without the things trying to tear his air conditioner off his camper. And the VDOT did. After I met with you all last time, we had had a tremendous flood of rain in most places in Scott County. And by the way, Scott County is very, very fortunate that we've not had the flooding in the Cannon County, Eastern Kentucky. And I know that the people in Scott County, including myself, have responded as best we can to financial help and dryers and all that. That's a tremendous thing, because we realize it can happen in Scott County. But anyway, after that rain, and I met you all, VDOT did come and scraped our roads. They called me and said they were going to clean out the ditches, and going to clean out the culverts, and going to do all this, while they brought the road grader and scraped the road. Which is a good thing until it comes the next rain, and then it's worse. When you stir all that stuff, and then the rain comes, it washes it even worse, and that's the way it is today. It's sort of like the old saying, doing the same thing over and over and expecting to get results is the definition of crazy. And that's what we have on our roads. You just do the same thing over and over and over to get the same results. I realize the right rains we've had may not be normal, but for the people who live on these roads and have to get out and go to work, or pick up family, or come to supervisors' meeting, perhaps don't have a four-wheel drive vehicle. My sister has one of the Priuses, and she can't hardly get to my house in that situation. So we asked you the last time, and I will ask you again, please put some priority on getting our roads paved, because that's all that's going to solve this. As I told you before, I spent my career as a civil engineer, and once you're educated as an engineer, you're ruined for the rest of your life. Because you look for problems and you want to solve problems, and you look for problems that are beyond your capability to solve. This is one of them. It's beyond my capability of solving this problem. I only come to you folks, and I did talk to VDOT. You know what they give me? They give me your phone number.
That's not surprising.
Here's who you need to talk to. Well, you know, we're back to talking to. Just as a refreshing, I'll give you again the statistics on our roads. It's about, what's that lost in there? It's about one point six mile, about fourteen houses on it. Some of them are real nice houses. Some of them are average houses. Lot of good people. Lot of people work. We got, I forgot to mention to you, we have on our road a lady who's written books about Scott County. And she was written poems. That's Miss Rita Quillan, who's a well-known author in this, in our community. But that's not what's important. I mean, people are the same regardless of whether they're doctors, lawyers, and whatever. And we have those in our community. But we have a lot of farmers, the great people, you know, good, good people down. But I haven't heard anything from anybody on the board since I was here last week, last month. And I don't know whether to expect to hear anything from the board. To my knowledge, none of you have looked at these roads. Miss Patty's that may have, because she's got mud and all, that picks right up the top of one of the worst hills that's on these roads. So what should I expect? Do I need to have a barbecue and invite you all to it? If that's what it's take, we would do it. We just need some indication that you're either willing to help us. And there's two things. If you can't help us, just let us know, and we'll go wherever we can to try to get somebody who could help us. But if you won't help us, just let me know what we need to do to try to convince you to help us. So with that, unless you have questions, then maybe I'll conclude my remarks.
We usually wait till after says expression. Let me go ahead and address a couple of things that VDOT, the money they have is not enough. They're not going to do anything this year for secondary road, but they're, they're real, real rusty. The prices, they had some money, but the price has gone to the point where they don't have nothing to do anything. And so the six-year plan, we have that in place, and that's the way to go. There's probably two hundred fifty miles of roads like you're talking about. I get calls, two or three, sometimes four or five a week, same issues you've got. What can we do? And I don't know. I actually rode, my bicycle the other day checked on a road, and it was bad. I mean, it was, it was bad. And other than grading it, they graded all the roads, I think, the ones I was on, they had graded. I haven't looked at them. Not necessarily yours, you're talking about, but it's, it's really out of our control. If it's not, if the money's not there, we don't fund any roads. The county does not. It all comes through the state. If they don't do it, it ain't going to get done. And VDOT, their hands are tied too. There, that is the funding thing. I went to a six-year plan meeting back a few years ago when Landon Odle, he was servant, and Secretary Lang was there, and he told him about the unpaid roads we had. It was like, you know, he didn't realize that we have a county, and we're not the worst county, by the way, for our unpaid roads. There's other counties. A couple of them has more unpaid roads than us. Smith County, I think it is.
There's one up in North.
Loudoun County.
Loudoun County.
It's Loudoun County. Anyway, there's other counties like this, and so really, I wish there was something I'd say, yeah, we can get it done, but, but you said either we want or we can't. I'm going to go with the can't, because we don't have any funds to do that. It's all a VDOT issue. And it's really the people there. It's not their fault either, because the funding is just not there. So I don't know. I mean, you know, I hate that you're going through this with the amount of rain we've had. And also heard since what had happened, that they may have moved some of the people working in the other, in Wise and places, trying to get theirs, what's even passable. So I hope they're back now, but with, Wise got eighteen inches of rain. Wise County, the town of Wise got eighteen inches of rain in July. We got like eleven or twelve here in this county. But still, it's an issue, and I don't know, I know you're frustrated with it, but I don't know if we can do anything right now.
Well, I appreciate that, but you know, what really concerns you, and as I come down here this morning, VDOT is paving a shoulder on Veterans Memorial.
How many, how many dump trucks did you pass through there?
Must have been a dozen.
At least, at least. And it's, it's the shoulder.
Paving the shoulder.
It's the shoulder.
And you.
What they do on it, I, and I, back when they paved from Fort Blackmore toward by the army tank, it's five lanes wide. And back two years ago, I thought the pavement was good, but that's primary road, and we can't get any funding from that. And I wish they'd let us say, well, don't do that, and let's, let's take that five lanes wide if you've done here. How many miles could we do on these back roads?
Right.
But the money is in those pot, and we can't, they, we can't, and they can't either, so paving that shoulder, I couldn't believe what I saw there this morning.
Well, who can do something about that?
It has to come from your state legislature. It has to come there and.
They're talking to Mr. Kill Door and some of that.
And Todd Hilly. They're your state senator and, and your delegate, yes.
I appreciate.
I wish they'd let us say, don't pave that shoulder. Let's take all of that resources, and let's pave Hale Spring Road, or let's pave Soul Lake Road. But it's, it's an issue that, and it's frustrating, because you see something done, but what, now they see it differently, I'm sure. It don't need to be done. Let us decide what they do, and we don't have, we can't do that. They won't let us.
But they still got your phone number on their website.
Yeah. I wish we could control it. And I, everybody here wish that we could. And, but, but I don't know. It's, it's frustrating, and I know the VDOT guys stood around with anything. The most important road that people have is the road they use. And that's a fact. I mean, the most important road to you is the road you use. When you take these school buses, running over two hundred fifty miles of dirt roads twice a day, and what they're having to go through, the maintenance and the upkeep that they're having to do. And so, you know, you think about, you know, from that perspective, how to deal with it. And the little narrow roads, you can't even, you, two goats can't pass on it because it's so, it's so narrow. And some places, you go in the river if you try to pass, you know. I drove one other day, and that's with the River Bluff Road, and that's the way, that's the way it is. The Copper Creek Road, that's the way it is.
You know, a few years ago, Danny, we tried to get them to let us move money where there was cutting up all this pavement and stuff. How many years to be honest, it's been a while, but they wouldn't let us do it. We tried to get them to let us.
They don't let us touch.
Move money from one.
I guess we're not smart enough. I don't know, but they have, but it's a state. That's not just a Scott County VDOT thing. It's a state thing that you're doing. And, and they're, bless them. VDOT, it's not their fault either. It's the powers that be that has these, these regulations in place and how things are funded.
And you know, Mr. Gilmore, one reason they can't get a lot of work done as far as working roads and stuff, they don't have no help now. They took all their help away.
I've heard that from the Fort Blackmore people too, and I'm sympathetic to it, and.
They took their help away.
We still have bad roads.
Got bad roads, yeah.
You know, I'll, you know, I know exactly what you're talking about. I mean, I've, you know, Gabe's got that farm down there, so, I mean, the last time it rained, he and I went down through there, and I, we stopped right there at that, at that gate going down into his field. And I took pictures and put a, you know, done the help ticket into, to VDOT and everything, you know, just like, like they tell us to. That, that, where it had washed down in there was as, you know, deep as my leg, a rut down in, down into there. So, and I took pictures, you know, down ground level so that I could show what that road is doing, you know, what it's doing right in there, because it's just washing. And it's washed, but they came, and I think they might have scraped it again, and maybe put down some gravel or something, but the next time it rains, it just washes it right down in there. So, I mean, they're not, and I know, I know you're frustrated, and he is too. I mean, and I understand that, and everybody is, but I, you know, I, the, the help ticket is the only, is our only avenue at this point.
I filled those out too.
Yeah.
And we did a work order number.
Yes, yes.
In our case, Fort Blackmore, the colony, they don't have enough people to do for us, and we still have bad roads.
Yeah. It's frustrating, yeah.
The one thing I wish they would do, I live in another state, was in West Virginia for a while, and I, those roads there, we dealt with them a lot. And they do a real rustic road. They don't do site clearance, they don't do drainage. They take a grader and smooth it and pave it. That's all they do. And here, I mean, they have to do all the site clearance and drainage and rideaway acquisition, and don't even do that. You know, they, why they just grade the thing, get smooth and pave it. That's all. That's what they do, and it works.
Some, some of the issues like the state, like Loudoun County, was that one, they're up northern Virginia, and they just don't have the hills on the roads that we have here, and they're more likely a sandy type road. So they probably don't have people going to the board of supervisors.
I don't know. I say one, that they make a lot more money than we do. I will say that in Loudoun County, but anyway, appreciate you coming, and I know that's not what you wanted to hear. I know it's not, but.
Well, it, it has to start in Richmond, from what I've found out. You know, I actually rode around VDOT the other day, and we've come over there. That, you know, VDOT is, it's not really their fault here, you know, there's only a handful of men working at Fort Blackmore. But back in, I did a little research on my own, and I found an article talking about northern Virginia's roads, and it talked about a blueprint plan. And I thought, what is a blueprint plan? So I got to looking that up, and the blueprint plan came from legislature in the state of Virginia to actually cut VDOT. That's why you started seeing Nicholsville closed, Gate City's closed. That's, that's where it started, and that was back in two thousand nine under Tim King. You know, and they, they have cut it a lot. I, when I got to looking at, I mean, you can go online and find, it's called the blueprint plan. And that, that, that needs to change, you know, in, in, of course, you're, you're in my district, you know, I've, I've been over there several times to, to your house. But when they closed Nicholsville, that, you know, a, a lot of these unpaid roads is in District Three, and they're in a wad. They're around Midway, Twin Springs, Nicholsville, there's, I wouldn't care to say that there's probably seventy percent of the unpaid roads is in District Three. And when they closed Nicholsville, that simply did away with manpower, you know, and you had, there, there, there's nobody there to work them. So in, in, in my opinion, if, if, if the board can do something, we need to send a letter or something to the governor or something, and have them rework that blueprint plan. And, and, and put some more money toward, I mean, we're the second, we have the second most unpaid roads in the state of Virginia. And I, I know you're working on to get, get yours paved, and that's really all that's going to fix yours, because there is a real steep hill right there at his house, and there's nothing else. I mean, that's, that, there, there's not much more that you can do with that. But there needs to be something, if, if there's a way for us to send a letter to them and have them rework that blueprint plan, explaining that, you know, we need extra funds, simply because we have more unpaid roads. And you know, and I wouldn't care to say that Loudoun, Loudoun County is number one, and of course, it's a different grade, different soil type, you don't have this runoff like we do here. But some of those might be by choice. They may not want their roads paved. You know, and, and that's, you know, that, that, that really surprised me when, when we heard that, that, that it was number one, but anyway. There has to be more, you know, I would, I think Nicholsville's, the, the VDOT needs to be opened back up and manned. You know, there are, surely they could find people to, you know, I, I don't know, it, it just needs to be looked into again, because their, their blueprint plan is not working. And I'd like for you to read the article about the ones in northern Virginia, about how, well, I'll let you read that for yourself. I'm not going to say what it's saying.
Would you all, as the board of supervisors, be willing to send something to the state as it relates to the roads?
Sure, we can do that.
Express just what Jeremy said.
Back not so many years ago, they had twenty-eight employees. They're down to fourteen, right now only eight working, I believe I quoted correctly. And so out of the fourteen is eight working to cover five hundred thirty-four square miles.
I know, I know the situation, but somebody's going to try to do something.
That's, you get to me, I know this is not what you want to talk about, but getting this bypassed through here was a done deal back six, seven years ago. It was a done deal. And we went to that, that six-year plan meeting in Bristol. They had it in there, had zero dollars, they, they zeroed it out. And it was a, it, well, I'm telling you, I met, we met with Donnie Nasser, we met with our senator, delegate, it was a done deal, and I don't want to, the funding got pulled on to connect Route seventy-one, seventy-two with Waddle Gap. It was a done deal. It would have connected the ball part two, and it got, they took the funds away.
In my opinion, that's part of the blueprint plan. They, they.
If something ever happens, if something, God forbid, immox and gap on Route twenty-three, you got a, you got a railroad, you got a four line, what happens? Lee County, Wise County, City of Norton, Scott County, what happens to get to Kingsport?
You can't get out.
You can't get out.
No.
And they know that. But they pulled those funds, and then I turned around and found, they found four point eight million somewhere. How you lose four point eight million? I don't know that they found it for engineering studies to get this stuff done. And the cost went from ninety million to forty-five million, and it was, and Leno Wisco was involved in it. It was a done deal, and then they pulled the funding on it, so I don't know.
Well, if you could send something.
We can do that.
Express from the county's.
Yep, we can do that.
Thank you for your time. I took more time.
That's okay. So people need to hear this.
Okay. Appreciate it.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Usually we don't get into this discussion here. Y'all, we, we got you on the agenda, so y'all can wait. And usually the discussion don't happen, there's an expression. I want to do it where you were up here, usually wait till the end of it, but anyway, I think we need to have this, you know, back and forth with you on this. So we can all be on, on the, on the same page with this, so thank you for coming. Anyone else wishing to speak?
When, when did you say you wanted to do that?
After we close this expression, we'll vote to do that. Send a letter. Just a few minutes.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak on this expression? All right, like you're the only one. So with that, we'll come out of this expression, and we can send this letter with a motion for someone on the board to do that, and hopefully get their attention, and, and the stuff you said here, we can maybe quote some of that in the letter to see the concern that we have. And I can't promise you anything, because this year they're not doing anything as far as paving, on real rustic or secondary roads or not. But like I said, we have money, but not enough. Price has gone to the point where we don't have, we don't have the money to do anything. So, anyone here make a comment or may entertain a motion to send the letter as requested of Mr. Gilmore?
I'll make a motion, Danny.
All right.
I'll see.
Who do you want the letter sent to?
I'm, I'm bad to always go to the top, so I figured the governor.
Well, that and our state delegate and state senator too, we'd send them the copy to the governor. But. We'll see what happens.
That's a stamp.
Yeah. And one more thing happened. You may have seen that, and how that you find two, two billion dollars too, that's one point nine billion, that they had excess in revenue they didn't know they had. Now, how you find, like, the four point eight billion, I mean, I question, how did you lose that? But they found a one point nine one billion with a B. So I don't know. I don't know. Big money, I guess you got, they got so much, they don't know how much they've got. I don't know, but they had that much more in a surplus that they didn't know they had. So hopefully, when you get to a little of that back here, it would, it'd go a long way.
Well, what about the infrastructure money? The federal government supposedly supports the state. Have you heard anything about that?
No. Okay, need to vote. Have we had a motion in a second? Do we, everybody, on the favor of the vote, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So we'll, we'll get it done. Appreciate you coming. Next item is a public hearing on special use permit for Curtis Coleman for seventeen fifty Clinch River Highway tax map numbers, one hundred dash A dash eight three A dash six, and one hundred dash A dash eight three A dash seven, to use the parcel as a campground. And Mr. Gilmore.
Morning, board.
Good morning.
Um, in first June, I had a, a Mr. Matt Murray presented an application for a campground for Mr. Coleman down on the Clinch River. Anyway, it's in your packet there, the application. Uh, it's for a, right outside of Clinchport, they have an area of. That he was, had two parcels that belonged to a Jeremy and Galateen out, and he wants to use those as a campground. He put in the application, so can you get the slideshow up?
Are you pushing the side then? There you go.
Yeah, but I may want full screen, so slideshow, shit, slideshow. There you go. There's the application. All the adjoining property owners are sending a registered letter, a form of the, the meeting of the Board of Planning Commission, and then of the Board of Supervisory Committee this morning. There it is, where it is in the county, on that Clinch River. There's the two parcels. The parcels adjoining it already designated as a campground some time ago, and. As it is within a campground, you have to go through the special use permit, and there you can see the flood plain and the flood zone. The floodway is the actual shepherd portion, so there's not really much between the highway and the river floodway that can be used as a campground. Now, as long as they keep them on wheels, they're okay. I have in your packet, of course, there is the portionality zoning ordinance, and there it is, the campgrounds. Are the definition of campgrounds. Since the application came afterwards, you all have, the county has readjusted the definition for campgrounds, and it's in your packet too. It's under the supplement, and it gives more standards and information about the campground that you'll need to know. And the, Mr. Coleman received a copy of this when he put in the application, so he is aware of all this. Pretty straightforward. This is, I think, the planning commission has recommended that this be approved of the campground.
David, is this in the Old Town Clinchport? I can't, I couldn't tell.
No, it's right outside of it. You go up the Clinch River when you pass the, I passed your parents, almost right in front of, on the right, right? Uh, it used to be Sasquatch Campground or something like that.
Okay, on the right.
He had, didn't actually have a campground. What he had was he floated the river from there, and he since moved his operation down on twenty-three.
Okay.
Know where it is.
Mr. Chairman, is that in your district or my?
Mine.
I know it's really close to the line.
It is.
Any questions?
No opposition from the folks that were notified?
Yes. Everybody?
There was no opposition from them?
No, I haven't heard anything from anybody. When we did your original, we did have one person up the adjacent road, but he didn't respond this time.
Okay.
And there already is campground there, I know you've seen it, it's not maintained in very good condition, the adjoining campgrounds and all. In fact, they left, they left about a sixty-thousand-dollar camper there on the Lice Flood, and it actually got flooded about two foot of water in it, and the reason I was given by the owner was that he couldn't find wheels to go on the camper.
You're right about keeping wheels on, they need to.
That's, you know, one of these days, we're gonna have the grandy type flood, and it's gonna be a lot of materials. The rumor is from FEMA, I haven't talked to them last year, but the rumor was that if you have a, hide them on the river, and it gets worse down against a bridge, then they're gonna hire an independent contractor to come in, remove it, and send you the bill.
Wow. But it is a great place for, for a campground, it is, it's, it's close to the four-lane and the water's great, so it's a great place.
We've got a lot of campgrounds going in, I've got another one next month.
That's good. Good.
Any more questions?
Anything for Mr. Gillenwater? With that, we'll go into the speaking part, and anybody wants to comment, you most certainly can.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Jesse McMurray, I represent Mr. Coleman. I've gotten to know Mr. Coleman pretty well over the last year or so, and he's now a local back from Kingsport, and he approached me about just some assistance in helping him do this process. So one thing I can tell you about Mr. Coleman, he wants to do it right. So he, right off the bat, he, he wanted to make sure that we, we got all the proper permits, and he told me about his plan, and I, I personally think it's a tremendous idea. He's, and he can tell you a little more about it, but he's, he's what I would call an expert in the RV market, I guess, and he's using some of that expertise to benefit Scott County, I believe, and bring some commerce here. And he can tell you a little bit about some of the research he's done on RVers and how they like to spend money, which I think is, is tremendous, but he, he can explain a little bit more about it, but he, he definitely wants to do this the right way. What's there now is not necessarily what he's gonna be doing. He's gonna be doing a, a top-notch park for RVers, and of course, he and I have discussed the, the issues with flooding and the importance of even having in his lease something to the effect that, you know, that it, should the water tries, you know, that they need to be able to get their, their RVs out there, so leaving the wheels on there, or particularly close to where they can get them on there quickly, should they need to. And it will not be, one thing, it is technically a campground, I guess, under, under the code, but it's, it's just a park for RVers, he's not gonna be doing tent camping, not allowing, you know, bonfires and parties and, and that kind of thing, it's, it's really just a place for people to come, park their RV, enjoy some of the beautiful scenery we got here in Scott County, and, and I think it's a really good idea, but I'll, I'll let him kind of take a few minutes for it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you and tell you what I'm up to. This property is small, that's the first thing to understand, I'm not gonna build a big campground that's gonna have many spaces, an RV is a large vehicle, and to be able to maneuver it around the property, you have to have room for that, that's most of the room, it's just, you know, the area. So there's probably, right now, I think there's four existing spaces, and there might be five or six total on the property, so there's room to expand it. The importance of this property, having the special use permit, having somebody like myself being able to run it and own it, is that what we learned over the last couple of years is that RV parks, campgrounds that have sewer, water, power, these are essential services, especially during something like a pandemic. You've got RVs that have big tanks, and if somebody cannot dump their tanks, they're gonna do it in the grids on the Walmart parking lot or your grocery store parking lots in the middle of the night, because the, the alternative is not acceptable, which is their tanks overflowing up into their carpet of their RV. This is a hundred-billion-dollar-a-year industry. My background is I'm the founder of the internet's largest social network for RVers, so I'm connected to, we were acquired by Thor Industries, which is the largest manufacturer of RVers. RVers bring a tremendous amount of commerce to any area that they come to, they shop, they fill up these huge tanks with, you know, fuel, and they're looking at all the recreation, that's why they come here, is to enjoy the area that your county has to offer. So I have zero interest in having a campground where people will come in their cars and sit down by the river and camp out, this is more an essential service for people. The people I believe that are there right now, I have no access to the property, I don't own it, I intend to, but the people, I think there's maybe three RVers that are there right now, one of them is a traveling nurse that's working in Ballard, and the other is a guy that's working on the roads, hopefully doing a better job than the state does. And so that's what this is, what I intend to do is, if I can hold the property, hopefully I do, to be able to clean it up and make sure that, that it's right. As far as things being on wheels, there would not be an RV recreational vehicle on that property that would not be able to move, that would be a prerequisite, and also the, I believe it's the hundred-and-eighty-day rule, sure, that they, they cannot, the, the reason for that rule is so you don't, it's not so that you don't have people living there full-time, and so that you know that this vehicle's moved. So they cannot be in that space for more than a hundred-and-eighty days, even if they have to move it over to the next place, then you know that it can be moved. And the other thing that I want to mention to you before I conclude is there's an animal in the world called a work camper, and these are retired people that have been in retirement have chosen to travel country in an RV, and they're wonderful people, they're people from our communities and everywhere, and what they're looking for are opportunities to be able to be in a place like Scott County for three, you know, three months, and I would have a spot available and always have a work camper on site, so there was somebody there twenty-four hours a day to deal with any issues, you know, electrical emergencies, telephone service is spotty out there, as you probably know, and so having somebody out there is important. We will have internet that's out there so that people can do voiceover and internet protocol, avoid telephone on their cell phone. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
There won't be any permanent building on decks or anything?
No, no permanent structures, other than what is currently there and what's there, I really want to get a hard look at and make sure that it's, there is one building towards the back of the property, towards the road, and I think that's okay, it's not a permanent, I think it's a.
It's on wheels, I believe it's on wheels in this county, is it not?
No, it's permanent.
Is it permanent?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a little office. There shouldn't be any permanent structure.
Permanent.
Good.
I've never seen it move.
Yeah, so whoever put that there, it's not in the front of the property, it's back towards the road, and I don't think anybody's living in there, so it's like a little office area.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments for these folks? All right, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, we will close the public hearing, nothing more discussion or possible vote, do we have any discussion? One thing has happened, I talked to a guy that sells campers, and it has gone through the roof, you think the gas prices, they go down, the people, the pandemic, they're not wanting to stay in hotels as much anymore, they're wanting to, they're on the place to vote, they don't want to, so they're looking for, I know one guy went to Colorado, could not find a camping spot in the month of July in Colorado. So you think about how it's grown and how, how much, how important it is, and I think it'll be an important asset to Scott County. So well presented, we thank you all, no other discussion, winner, time to vote to approve this special use permit.
I'll make that motion. I grew up in that area, know it real well, and what Mr. Coleman said, that'll be a perfect bid.
Thanks, Senator.
For that area, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Right, second, any discussion? All in favor of voting, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so motion carried, and congratulations, opposite, open, up and running, say, thank you all. Next item is a, item number eight, Convention of States update, Sharon Nelson, Tommy Osborne is here, they did a presentation, there was this expression last time we invited them back, and so anyway, let's see this, good afternoon, welcome to our meeting.
Yes, good morning. I am so grateful to have the opportunity to come back again, I was here last month and invited to come and give a presentation, a little bit more in-depth of what actually a convention of states is, so that you understand what it, what it is. So again, my name is Sharon Nelson, and my husband, Tommy Osborne, is back there, and I am the district captain for District One in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we reside in Scott County as residents. And back last month, you were each given a packet about, about it, I hope you had a chance maybe to look at it, and there was a petition, that is also part of that, that's how, how you can voice on a personal level. So Convention of States, what that is, it's a thirteen-year-old organization, it came about as part of Mark Meckler, Michael Ferris, and Mr. Levine from the Tea Party movement. And they asked Mark and Mike to start the Convention of States because of their experience. And what it is, is in our constitution, in Article Five, it gives Congress the ability to propose amendments to our constitution. Our founding fathers also realized that the human nature can become corrupt, and they put in at the last minute the ability for states and its presidents to also propose amendments to the constitution. And so that is under Article Five. What that's called is through the process of a convention of states, and there, the, the process is, is that there has to be an agenda, and that agenda has to be approved by every single state. We need thirty-four states to approve that agenda before a convention of states can be called, and it has to be put on the calendar. Congress can't stop it, president can't stop it, our governors can't stop it, none of them are involved, this is strictly between the states and the people. So it's an amazing thing that we have. So once those thirty-four, once the Convention of States is called, that agenda items are discussed, all fifty states are represented. The first Convention of States agenda items are term limits, these are all for the federal agencies, term limits, a balanced federal budget, and also the third one is to pull in the overreach of the federal government. That is the first agenda. So once they're all there, all fifty, they hash out now the wording of these amendments, proposed amendments. Mark Levine has written a book called The Liberty Amendments, he has wording for every single one, it's a must-read, it's highly, it opens your eyes and your imagination to how we can use our constitution to get back on track, of which we've gotten off track for the past hundred years plus. Okay, so now they have the amendments hashed out, let's use term limits for example. So now that amendment goes back to the states for ratification, we need thirty-eight states to ratify any amendment that is now going to be become law in our constitution. All it takes is thirteen states to say no to that. So that is the goal of Convention of States. The mission of Convention of States, which is a higher calling, is to create the largest grassroots active volunteer army in the nation. And what that means is, we as volunteers in Tennessee, Virginia, Ohio, North Carolina, California, Portland, Oregon, wherever, because COS is everywhere, we will rally to assist another state's efforts on either an election, or a piece of legislation, or something of that kind that is going outside the parameters of what the government has been given authority to do in the constitution. So that is, so it is now a mindset change, it is us as citizens of the United States taking personal responsibility for our governance, our self-governance, and, and bringing back or restoring our way of life that we all treasure, God-given freedom and liberty. And so that is the mission. So we can call Convention of States over and over again, once we get the first one under our belt, then we go after the next one and propose other amendments. So that's kinda, that's what it is in a nutshell. So as you know, our constitution has been under attack, it's been under attack for over a hundred years, that is when the administrative state or our federal government found a loophole. So instead of going through the process, which I just given you on how to propose an amendment to our constitution, they, laws have to be, go, go through that process as well. But they found the loophole, and our federal government abdicated that law, that requirement to bureaucrats, to agencies, and we call them the alphabet agencies. You just start naming them off, the FDA, the EPA, the IRS, the, you know, there's hundreds, if you've ever been to Washington, C and gone down Parkway, the, that's what lines all of them. They are unelected people, and they have been running our lives for the past one hundred years. So our, what, what we believe, what I believe, and what COS is, is states, is it's God, country, and our family, God verse and everything. So we come as advocates, we come in peace, we come with kindness, we come with respect and honor to everyone we speak to, enemies, foes, and supporters alike, and we then save country. If we do not have a country, our families fall apart, there's no place for our families if we don't have a country. So that's what this is all about, COS. So what I'm going to show you though, is some, the momentum that is happening in our country, and it's not being talked about in mainstream media because it's not part of their narrative, yet we are in a battle for our way of life, and we have had some major, major victories. Our Supreme Court has gone constitutional, I mentioned this a little bit before, but I would just want to show you what they accomplished in restoring our constitution in their last session, the summer session. So if you could bring up my PowerPoint presentation, please. And I would like that also fullscreen, please. Thank you. So the very first one was our Coach Kennedy versus Brimerton School District. This was a great win on our freedom of religious speech, that was the first one. So each one of these rulings by our Supreme Court now takes precedent over every other ruling or case that comes up that attacks our religious freedom. The next one, which got a lot of news, was the Dobbs versus Jackson's Women's Health. And this ruling basically struck down Roe versus Wade, and instead of now our federal government dictating medical law, it now is to the state level, and you're seeing all of that, what's happening with that. So now it becomes a state issue, which is versus a federal government, and that's the way it should be, we are a republic, constitutional republic, we are, we have state sovereignty. So each state can choose and decide how they're going to run their state based on their constituents' needs. So this was huge too, now we see which, how they're pushing back, how they're fighting this, and what states are, are continuing with, the right to abortion, and in what way, and what states are not. The next one was the Supreme Court says that the constitution protects rights to carry a gun outside the home, this is huge too. New York, a one-hundred-year-old law that required a citizen to say, give reason why they needed to carry a gun to protect themselves, they had to give a reason why they believed they should be able to carry a gun for self-protection. They struck it down, which means now it goes back to the lower case. They struck it down, which means now it goes back to the lower cases, the states, to decide what your gun carry laws are. So again, coming back to state sovereignty. I'm going to keep saying that word. And this next one is, is one of the most significant environmental opinions. And this, I'm going to show you a couple clips, because if you're not aware of this one, this changes the entire game on how our government has been working for the past one hundred years. As your call, I mentioned administrative state. Those are our unelected bureaucrats in these agencies that are ruling our lives unconstitutionally and illegal as well. And this ruling basically states that they have no jurisdiction over us. So a state can stop any agency that are trying to infringe their rules, because they're not laws, because they didn't go through the process. And they can't do that. So I'm going to have you show now the first one on the fourth time's TV EPA. These are two, I'm not showing you the whole thing. You can find the whole thing yourself under YouTube. Epic TV has these out there. So I'm just showing you two little clips that kind of summarizes really quickly about how this, the meaning behind West Virginia versus the EPA. In essence, I can give you a little overview. It has to do with the power plants. The EPA wanted, can you hit like escape?
Yeah. Escape button.
The escape button up there?
Yeah.
Okay. Now it should be down. The EPA came in and said that they could regulate how much power a power plant puts out. And this is all part of the Green Agenda. And this is where the Supreme Court said, no.
Which one of the three?
So this is not one. The Supreme Court up roots. Okay. Now I need you to go to that point, right there. Stop at thirteen oh five, please. And if you can put it on fullscreen.
If the Supreme Court works. By making this ruling, they made the determination of these types of powers, that regulatory ability is not on agencies, but on Congress, i.e. in accordance with the Constitution of the United States. Meaning they cannot bypass the normal legislative process to create laws. Meaning really like a huge, huge percentage of the US government is basically like illegitimate now. I mean, to put, to put it bluntly, that's essentially what it means. It means that they basically made like books upon books, I mean, if you stacked them, it would probably be taller than the building of laws, of regulations, made them just illegitimate. Like, because again, they were created by bypassing that process, which the Supreme Court now says you have to go through if you want to do this kind of stuff. Kind of stuff that, well, the Constitution of the United States says you have to go through if you want to do this kind of stuff. Like, you know, welcome, folks, it's Independence Day. You just got your independence back. Like, this is the, this is the new American revolution? And for some reason, almost nobody's talking about why this is such a big deal. Like, this, this is the dismantling of the regulatory state, the dismantling of really the deep state, these unelected bureaucrats, to an extent that he, I mean, I'd never thought we'd see, I'd never thought I'd see in my lifetime this understanding. Let me go more into this. Now, what this means again, is that if Biden wants to pass now his climate, his climate agenda, if he wants to pass Build Back Better, if he wants to regulate whatever he wants to regulate, he has to go through Congress. And so Congress need, in the normal process, Congress needs to create their bills, and need to present them, need to debate them, need to go back and forth. And then there might be a filibuster, it might go back, and so on and so on. And the president, finally, at the very end, it has to sign off on it and say, okay, I agree to it, right? That's the normal legislative process. It's very.
So he just described what is our process as a, in our formal government, to get a law passed. So now just a little bit, twenty forty-two, twenty-two. And no one is talking about it. So we, the people, need to be aware of what our rights are.
Elected agencies essentially ruling this country, they can no longer do that. They can no longer do what they were doing before. Now, Breivens and Spock was saying the case involves the Clean Power Act, which was adopted under President Barack Obama to fight climate change. The program was estimated at the cost as much as thirty-three billion dollars per year, and would have completely reordered our nation's power grid. The state of West Virginia, joined by two coal companies and then, and others sued the EPA, arguing the plan was an abuse of power. And by deciding in favor of West Virginia, they're saying if, you know, this is with the big if, by deciding in favor of West Virginia, the court could begin to rein in the vast powers of the alphabet agencies in DC that run our lives and return it to legislators whom we elect to create legislation. And again, folks, that is what just happened. This is the new American Independence Day. Could not be more fitting frankly. Because again, America has restored what the Constitution said it should be doing, in terms of passing new laws, which is not bypassing the elected officials who represent the American people. Right? We, the nature of a constitutional republic, as opposed to a pure democracy, or frankly, dictatorship in this case, right? The difference between the two is that you have officials who you elect to represent you, as opposed to direct democracy. Very representative democracy, which is what a republic is. We're also a constitutional republic, not just a republic. And the Constitution is what constitutes the United States. The Constitution is how things should be done. Basically, they found a loophole in this, where they allowed agencies to basically create laws and bypass that process. And by doing so, they changed the nature of America. Now, this goes technically all the way back to the nineteen thirties.
Thank you. And then you can bring my PowerPoint presentation back up. So that, these things that have happened just in June, these are rulings that they made in June, are tremendous, amazing momentum. And they go right in line with what COS is doing. With us having relationships with our local legislators, know who we're voting, and that we, we start at that level to ensure that we vote in the proper people, and that they are doing what it is that we want as the majority, because it's by majority. That's how, how they move forward, not special interests here and there. So I just wanted to show you that thing. And I wanted to also make a comment. There are, there are thousands, thousands of people out there in different organizations, not just COS, that are fighting for our rights. They're in different, they're in the sheriffs, which I have a few minutes, I'll show you about that, because it's something that Tommy and I are going to move forward on. But there's people in our schools, there's people in the health agencies and travel that are, that are out there filing lawsuits and suing our federal government for their overreach. So we are in a full-on battle here for our, for our Constitution and way of life. And now let me go into what the, what the COS is all about. So we're going to show the best video I've seen that describes the process and what they're kind, we're up against when we go to our, in our case, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we bring the bill that has those three amendments on it, and we get it to be passed. So I'll explain a little bit how that all works, but this is Rob Kelly. And you can just start that at the beginning. So he's talking to a Senate joint session in Wisconsin. And he explains this whole process of how this works.
How the Article Five process works and the limitations that actually do exist, both in the Constitution and from the history of practice in this. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. As you said, my name is Robert Kelly. I'm here on behalf of Convention of States Action. We are a nationwide grassroots nonprofit organization with nearly four million supporters across the country. And we are here to advocate in favor of SJR fifty-seven. Many of those supporters are here in this room with you. They're going to be sharing their support of it from a personal level here, but I would like to just offer my expertise. I have studied this issue for the past six years. I have looked into the legal ramifications of the Article Five convention process. I briefly want to explain to the committee the purpose of the Article Five convention process, why it was put in the Constitution, and then address some of the concerns and some of the objections that have been raised. Because I think there's a fundamental misunderstanding of how the Article Five process works and the limitations that actually do exist, both in the Constitution and from the history of practice in this country, on how an Article Five convention would actually take place. First and most fundamentally, this piece of legislation is not about a particular policy position. This legislation is not about Republican or Democrat. This legislation is not about conservative or liberal. What this, what this legislation is about is a much more fundamental question than what is our policy. It's about the question of who decides what that policy should be. And our founders would have said that was really the ultimate question. And according to our Constitution, it is we, the people, who decide. And in order to secure that, in order to secure the rights of the people, the founders divided power within our government. First, they divided it between the branches of the federal government, the judiciary, the legislative and executive branches, such that each of those branches would have an incentive to take power away from the rest, so that each of those branches would check the others. In James Madison's words, "such that ambition would counteract ambition." And according to James Madison, it's that checks and balances system that secures our rights. Bills of rights are parchment barriers ultimately. Venezuela has a phenomenal Bill of Rights. It has a constitution that's over fifty pages long that guarantees you every right under the sun. And yet, none of that means anything without the meaningful substantive checks and balances in the system. And that's exactly what this legislation is about. The founders not only checked power, however, between the branches of the federal government, they checked power by balancing it between a federal government and the state government. And sadly, that balance of power, which we call federalism, has largely been dead in America for the past fifty years. The states have not exercised a meaningful check on the federal government. The states have not pushed back against federal overreaches of power. And the result is, we have federal government that does too much in our country here today. And that's not something, that's just my opinion, that's the opinion of seventy-two percent of the American people. And that opinion holds true, a majority of the American people believe that federal government is too large and does too much. That holds true regardless of whether they're Republican or Democrat, whether they're here in Wisconsin or out in California. That holds true across both political and geographic barriers. And what Article Five of the Constitution was designed to do is to ensure that that balance of power remained in place. It gives Congress the ability to propose amendments, as has already been discussed. Two-thirds of Congress can propose amendments to our Constitution. But it also gives two-thirds of the states the ability to propose amendments to our Constitution. Because as our founders recognized when they were drafting the Constitution, Congress cannot be the only body that's allowed to propose amendments. If so, we're never going to get amendments that are going to restrain the power of the government. If Congress becomes a problem, who are you going to go to to solve it, if only Congress has the ability to propose amendments? That's what this provision was designed to do in the Constitution, and that's what this legislation is about. It's about having the states step up to the table, saying that they're no longer just going to be treated as regional agencies of the federal government, and that they're going to actually push back on the federal government's overreach of power. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to go ahead and address some of the objections that have been raised by the committee here. First and most fundamentally, it's important to recognize the distinction between the Constitutional Convention of seventeen eighty-seven and what's being proposed here today. The Constitutional Convention of seventeen eighty-seven was obviously not called under Article Five of the Constitution, seeing as how Article Five of the Constitution did not exist yet. It was not called under the Articles of Confederation, because the Articles of Confederation made no such provision for any such convention. Instead, it was called under the reserved sovereign authority of the states. The states were completely sovereign at the time that our Constitution was adopted, and the Articles of Confederation recognized that. They had the power to write a new Constitution. They had the power to create a new system of government. And that's ultimately what they did at the Constitutional Convention of seventeen eighty-seven. That is not what this piece of legislation here does. And they're saying none of the sponsors would be behind it, and none of the states that have adopted this across the country would have adopted this legislation if that's what it did. Instead, what this legislation does is it uses Article Five of the US Constitution and follows the procedures laid out there to allow the states to exercise exactly the same power that Congress has, the power to propose amendments. And that's what Article Five says. It says, "On the application of the legislatures of two-thirds of the several states, Congress shall call a convention, which shall propose amendments, which shall be valid as part of this Constitution, when ratified by legislatures of three-quarters of the several states, or by conventions in three-quarters thereof." Now, as Judge Council pointed out earlier, the process, the process laid out in Article Five requires Congress to call a convention, says shall call a convention, when applied by the legislatures of two-thirds of the several states. Congress has no option upon this subject. Now, it's true, we don't have a Supreme Court decision that says shall mean must. There's no Supreme Court interpretation interpreting that provision in Article Five, but it's clear enough from the drafting of the Constitution, right? Shall means must. Congress shall call a convention. Congress must call a convention when two-thirds of the several states apply. What is the purpose of that convention? Article Five says, "The purpose of that convention is to propose amendments." And that's critically important. This convention has no power to ratify amendments. It has no power to rewrite our Constitution. It has the power, exactly the same power that Congress has, to propose amendments to our system of government. It's essentially a glorified drafting committee. Its provisions, any amendments that it drafts, have to go back to the states in order to be ratified, just as any proposals of Congress have to go back to the states to be ratified. And those provisions, those proposed amendments, must be ratified by three-quarters of the states. Thirty-eight states in our present system of government. And in fact, if you look at it from a state legislative body level, there are ninety-nine state legislative bodies in the country. That means that thirteen of those ninety-nine bodies could stop any amendment proposal. In practical political terms, this means you need both Republicans and Democrats to back any such proposal. It means you're going to need to enjoy the overwhelming support of the American people behind any amendment proposal before it can become part of our Constitution. And that's exactly as our founders intended it. They pledged their honor, their lives, and their sacred fortunes to the, to the provision of this country, to the birth of this country, and to the creation of our Constitution. And they did not make it easy to change that Constitution. Now, it's been raised on several occasions, well, this, this application seems very broad. It says, "Limit the power and jurisdiction of the federal government." That seems to leave a lot on the table. And the answer is, it does leave a lot on the table, because there are a lot of abuses of power by our federal government. There are abuses of power by the federal judiciary. So we have to leave Article Three open to amendment. There are abuses of power by the president. So we have to leave Article Two open to amendment. There are abuses of power by Congress. So we need to leave Article One open to amendment. This application is intentionally drafted to allow the states to come together and draft proposals that address all of the overreach by the federal government, to debate and discuss and come to agreement over how we can impose structural restraints on the federal government. There is however, an important limitation in that language. It says, "Limit the power of the federal government." Limit.
No, you can keep going.
Limit the power and jurisdiction of the federal government. There is a directional limitation, which is absolutely critical. It would be absolutely inappropriate, and it would be outside the scope of this application for the legislatures, for a convention, to propose amendments that expanded the scope of the federal government. So for example, taking away our Second Amendment rights, that would expand the scope of the federal government. That would not be limiting the power of the federal government, and therefore would be outside the scope of this application. Taking away the Fifteenth Amendment, or the Nineteenth Amendment, or any of the Bill of Rights, or any of the constitutional provisions that secure rights to the American people, would be absolutely unconstitutional under this piece of legislation, and would be struck down as such by the courts.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about that? I know I've listened to it at least six times, and there's always something new in there. The purpose of, and we get objections all the time. Another is that runaway, people are, that's the misinformation that's being put out there, that'll be a runaway convention. Well, that can't happen, because it's very structured. There can't be some group that comes in and takes over and starts messing with the whole process. That won't happen. Does anybody have any questions about this? This is available. You can watch this on the COS website. Again, they have lots of other hearings, but Rob Kelly really did a spot-on job on explaining what this is all about and how it works with our Constitution. Could I have my PowerPoint there? Yes, thank you. And can you put it on fullscreen, please? Okay. Now what we're going to do is talk about where we are. Where, where are we on all of this? So these are the national legislative states, and in particular about Virginia. So right now, we have seventy-three thousand supporters. What that means are people that, like me and Tommy. Supporters across the country is five-point-three million, almost. Signers, two-point- Signers, two-point-four million. We have veterans. We keep track of them. Volunteers separately. And I'm considered an active district captain. The goal is to have a district captain in everyone across the United States. That's over five thousand that we're looking for. So people like me that build relationships with my community residents and with our legislators. That's my job. So the next column next to it, these are all the states that have pre-- right now, we have nineteen states that have approved the agenda. We need thirty-four. We had four come on just this year. So these are all the ones that have prefiled. So they prefiled the House bill with their legislator to say, "This is what we're going to be talking about." Carried over, which means it's still in the process. And then, those are the ones with active as the little asterisk. So Virginia is on that list. They're not considered active, and I'll explain that in a minute. So if you can see this. So passed a committee. There, in 2022, there were seven. So this means it passed one level of committee, and I'll explain that in a minute. Single chamber victories, there were five states total there. Final passage, these were the four that just came on. And defeated in 2022 are those that-- and Virginia is in there as well. So how this works? So we have-- Let's see. No, never mind that. Excuse me. So how this works is, it starts in our House committee. And you have-- it's passed by simple majority. So the House Rules Committee starts first. And once it passes there, then it goes on to the House floor. And it has to be passed by simple majority there. And then that passover happens, and it goes to the Senate. And they have to do the same. It has to pass on the Senate Rules Committee, and then on the Senate floor, and then it goes for the full vote. Always by simple majority. And that all happens within that legislative period of time of January the fifteenth, I think, to the thirteenth, to March thirteenth or fifteenth. That is our time window that we do this in. So why it died is because we did not have the support to pass it in the Senate. It passed in the House, but not the Senate. And the reason-- And so instead of having it show as a defeat, they pulled it, and it didn't go forward into the Senate. Okay? So that's an explanation about that. So Rob Kelly talked about this as well. I just wanted to show you quickly on where the support is coming from. So these are-- This is a poll that was taken from the Truffle Guard group, and it was just recently released a few weeks ago. So support to call a convention of states from the Democratic Party is fifty percent. The ones that have no party or other is sixty-three, and Republicans eighty-one. And then below, it shows where they actually show up. So even within an age group, we have a seventy-one percent that approval to-- that support this within the thirty-five to forty-four range, age range. And to me, that's significant. Those are the ones that are up and coming. And even with the ones that are below that, at twenty-five to thirty-four age group, fifty-four-point-five percent support. There is overwhelming support to call a convention of states. The big thing is education, is letting people know that this is what we have. All right. So this is where we are. So Virginia stands. Right now, it's called an H J three bill. And this bill will probably change its name, because it has to be reintroduced when we have our districts redefined, which happens in 2023. So we're going to have redistricting, and we're going to have a different bill name. And it'll be refiled again, so guess what? So right now, Karen S. Greenhall, she's in District Eighty-five in Virginia Beach. She is the sponsor of the bill. Our goal is to get cosponsors. That makes the bill stronger when you bring it. So our House of Delegates and our House Rules Committee, Gilbert is our chair. Todd Gilbert is our chair. And if you look at the column, the last column actually shows if they are in support of it. And that asterisk means that they are a target, which means that our state C O S team has a strategy on how to communicate, how to educate, how to interact, how to-- whatever it is about the C O S project. So Terry Kilgore is also in support, but he is a weak supporter. And they give these designations based on conversations they've had with them over the course of the past years. In 2019, this bill also came forward, and it was-- it didn't move out of committee. So it's twice already here in the state of Virginia, which is not unusual overall. If you look at other states, they also have similar challenges. All right. And then down the line, and all of them-- The only other one that's close to us is Israel O'Quinn. He also is yes in support, but he's a weak supporter, which means both of them are not moving forward in the category of cosponsor, which is what we would like to see both of them be. So right now, as you can see, we have a majority in the House. So it goes through the House. And then they can wash their hands of it until it comes for the full vote. And that's where the rest of them come into play. So everyone is pretty much targeted to have conversations with. We want the weak supporters to be solid yes supporters, so when that vote comes, they don't flip-flop. So it's this relationship again with our legislators and letting them know what it is that we want, what the majority, what we want. This is the Senate. And this is how it is again in 2022. They have the majority. So even all the way to the bottom, there's three Republicans. And we have one that's uncommitted. And we have two that are there as yes, but they're also weak. So this is where this is. And we are probably going to have the same makeup in 2023. It won't be until-- Well, this one coming up, yeah. When we go into legislative session in 2023, we'll have the same makeup. So it isn't until the primaries in 2023, November, we'll see a shift on the numbers, on who's there or not. So what is our strategy then for Virginia? It's to build a team of people like me to educate and to create those relationships with our legislators, to educate them on what this is and that this is what the people want. We are actually, right now, talking about going to the Democratic Party's different associations of our area to educate on this. We talked to the G O P-- Is it correct? The Republican meeting. They meet twice a month. We want to scope with them. But because the fifty percent of Democrats are for this, they're people just like us. So it's educating them too on their values of life and liberty and God and family. And let them know that this does not-- It's not Republican or Democrat or independent. It's our way of life. And through that kind of a conversation, we believe that that we can create this trajectory that will be a longstanding one. When we start getting the Constitution back on track, it is a long-term effect. It's not just a quick fix. It's something that is how we can now hand over to our children and our grandchildren. So again, Tommy and I are here to educate. That is what we're committed to doing. So we're in this long term. We're looking to build a team. We'll be at Duffield Days. We need some help with that. Now, I'm at Parade, but the booth. There is a sign-up sheet if you'd like to help us with that. Our next meeting is August thirteenth. We meet once a month at the Bristol Library, nine-thirty to eleven-thirty. You can pass that along. And we're going to be talking about what we're going to be doing at Duffield Days. Are there any questions about any of this? How we can help you? If you have any ideas, who else we can speak with? Strategy is the name of the game kind of right now because of the condition of this? So, any questions?
Any comments or questions?
Is there a time limit?
No, there is no time limit. Thirteen years in running right now. We usually get more states that approve the agenda, come on board, when we have a lot of issues in our government, from our federal government. So getting four this-- Within the half-- First half year of 2022 was big. That's usually what happens. But the momentum is in place now. And that's why we are, you know, really committed to getting this word out about it. And then if I can just go back to one thing. I want to show you one other thing that's coming up. And I might just if I had a few extra minutes for this. This is big. This is coming up in the October session for the Supreme Court. They are going to talk about our election integrity, which we have all seen is questionable, whether or not we have truly a fair and true election process. When you go to the polls, do you truly believe that your vote is handled correctly and it's going to the right person? There are many, many people, based on the ones that support C O S, that do not believe there is an issue. So they are going to look at whether or not the federal government can override the state. Is one. And whether or not our state courts can nullify the legislation on how we run an election in our state of Virginia. And the same with each and every other state. They cannot come in and say, "No, the court can't overrule anymore." And that, this is a huge thing. And so part of this is this Tenth Amendment essentials. It says state sovereignty. And who enforces our sovereignty, our laws here? And that is our sheriffs. If you've watched Two Thousand Mules, it's a documentary put out by De Souza, which you can also find. Him and a group of people went and found-- Did extensive research. You should watch it. They use technology the way you've ever-- In his umpteenth way to bring forth evidence that our election was stolen and that there's massive fraud and corruption in our election process. And so that's what that video documentary talks about. But as a result of that, one of the originators of that interview, her and a sheriff from Arizona created this organization called Protect the Vote. Protect Vote, or protectamerica.com. And what they're doing is they're creating this initiative where the sheriffs and the citizens come together, and they work together to be the people-- To have us be the ones that make sure that our election process is happening lawfully. Because the sheriff is the one that can say, "Stop to the federal government or any agency coming in and taking away our rights." And so they're putting together an action plan called Protect America now, to connecting with the sheriffs-- This is their action plan-- With citizens, so that we work together, empowering them, training, resources. And then to have real eyes-- And we're talking about information, digital-- Whatever technology to make sure that our sheriffs and our counties have the information they need to ensure that our elections are free and fair. And then open lines of communication. They're putting together a national hotline that we can call. And our sheriffs can call and say, "There's something going on here." And then the resources will mobilize. And then they're going to do a public awareness campaign so that they educate people and sheriffs. So Tommy and I are committed to taking this to our sheriff, to introduce this, to have him know and understand what's happened with our election process. And if we can do this across the country, just think of being able to knowing your heart and have confidence that as you're going to the polls, that that really matters and it's lawful and it's exactly what you voted is going to be counted in that side. So again, this is not Democrat or Republican. This is about being an American citizen here. So that's available too. A lot of this is found on Epic TV. If you want any of those resources, please let me know. I have cards over here. There's a place to sign petitions, whatever other information. But we are here for you. We're here for a long haul. I want to thank you very much for having me. We're so grateful that you've received us the way you have.
Thank you, ma'am.
There's a book. It's called The Christian Life and Character of Civil Institutions in the United States of America. I'm not sure if you're aware of it or not. I think I read. I think I support a lot of what you're saying.
Can you repeat it again?
Uh, "Christian Life and Character of Civil Institutions of the United States." It was written by Benjamin Morris. It was published in eighteen sixty-three. The resources go right back to the early foundations of this nation. And I think you're spot on what you're talking about. I'm not sure of the public's perception, even if a lot of people even know about it or not. I think there'll be a lot of people that will see this. And I hope it will raise some eyebrows. You were talking about the election integrity, which is-- I don't know how we go from paper ballots and deciding our election in one day. And now we have computers and all of that. Now, we've got to take much more time, you know, to decide and so forth. I just-- It's hard to really grasp, you know, how we got to this point in time. And you mentioned the Two Thousand Mules? Yeah, I too would recommend that. Recommend that you watch that if you haven't watched it. I appreciate your coming today and doing your presentation. I like your shirt. I think that decides. We, the people, decide.
It's our country's worth fighting for. And it can be done. We just have to become engaged and realize it's up to us to have our freedom. And yeah. And we know that God has it all in control, so we've already won. And you go about it cheerfully and know that the right people come along to assist and be a part of this. And so again, thank you. I hope you'll be a part of this.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Next item on the agenda is planning District One Performance Contract.
This is an item that you do every two years. It is the Community Services Performance Contract for Planning District One Behavioral Health Services for fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four. It is two tabs on your tablet. It was a pretty large document, so we had to split that up.
If you've had a chance to look at it, and like I said, we do it every-- She said every two years we do this. So anyway, with that, what I want to discuss was the time motion to approve this performance contract. Anyone?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bree, you made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Herron, second. Any discussion? On the very bottom, say an a.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is the-- That's something I had asked for some time ago, and we kind of put it out. There's a lot of stuff going on this month. And it was to a bridge dedication in Dungannon. And I didn't put it in the email. The River is what I had in mind. To do this is for a guy that went to church with him. He died in two thousand nine. He was a World War II hero. I want to read you just a couple of things about him. His name was Jack D. Collins. But at the outbreak-- This is from his son and some information that they had. Outbreak of World War II in nineteen forty-one. Our dad was sixteen years old. He was a bus driver. But during the time, the Army often picked on his-- He had mathematical skills when he got into service. And he got in this chemical mortar battalion at Fort Rucker, Alabama. And so they were the kids, teenagers, who were thrust into a world of war under parry for the honors that they would see. They came from farms in Iowa. And it mentions all this stuff where they came from and even this little town called Dungannon. Now, along the way, they displayed all the finer traits of humankind. They are-- And including courage, loyalty, compassion. And so they followed their way through the major battles of Europe from D-Day to Cheremburg, to the Herken Forest, to the Battle of the Bog. They bled, died, and they proved their worth. And the eighty-seventh became one of the most solid actor fire support units in European theater of operations. They spent three-hundred-twenty-six straight days in combat, massing an enormous number of units and individual citations along the way, as well as a great-- as well as a great many casualties. These men call themselves the Forducers. They were, and they supported the more glamorous branches of the army, the infantry, the armor, the armor. And they were necessary, they were, when necessary, fought as infantrymen themselves. According to his discharge papers, separation notice, he entered the service as a private. But at the time of discharge, he had achieved the rank of sergeant, a heavy mortar non-commission officer. In the European theater, he served as a squad leader of mortar, of a mortar squad who selected sites, sided, and made site adjustments for range and deflection. Relayed firing orders and assigned men of his squad various duties. He was marksman with an M1 carbine and fought in five major battles, including Normandy, Northern France, the Central Europe, Ardennes, and the Rhineland. During his time of service, he was awarded following decorations. The American Theater Ribbon, European African Middle Eastern Ribbon, One Silver Star, Good Conduct Medal, Distinctive Unit Badge, Bronze Arrow, and World War II Victory Medal. In conversation with our dad concerning his service, which was extremely rare. I went to church with him, did not know till he passed away what he had done. He did talk to one of our deacons about some of the stuff he went through. He seldom ever talked about it. He was a sole survivor of his squad when they were overrun and killed by German soldiers during the massive counterattack. When he returned from World War II, he got married and went to work for a financial company, which he worked there, he retired from there. And during that time, he served 25 years on the town council. He also served as the mayor of Dungannon. During that time, he was greatly influential in the town and residents, completed various projects, and enhanced the lives of everyone here in the surrounding area. Like I said, I knew him well. I grew up with his sons, went to school with them. And so when I brought this to the attention of you all by email and so on, and I sent that to you to look at. And like I said, I didn't know if he passed away, all he had accomplished in World War II. So anyway, when I brought this up to possibly select this bridge, is it available? Do you know if it is available for naming?
No, I need, I need the structure number. And I needed to know what bridge. So you're talking about the big bridge that goes across the river toward Castlewood?
Yes, it's on Route 65. Anyway, I wanted to bring before you all, and to, with your blessings, to move forward with this. And I think it would be a great honor to do that, considering his community service, his military service to our nation. And so, and he was very young when he went in. I mean, he was, you know, he was very young. But he went in and was willing to do that. And he did tell a brother deacon at a church, that he said that, I don't know which battle it was, but they were in the water. Maybe, and I don't know if it was, I guess, D-Day or whatever. But he never understood why he survived. He said the bullets actually hit him around him. And he was, he was sole survivor of one of the squadrons there that he was in. And I think it bothered him. I think it did because of what he said, that he survived that, and some of his comrades did not. So I think it'd be an honorable thing to do this for this man. He's a very honorable person. He served his community, he served the military. So if we get a blessing out here today, I think we should do so.
We'll have it on the September agenda with a resolution if the board chooses to move forward. And then I'll know by then if that bridge is available.
Okay, go ahead.
You need a motion to move forward, Dan?
We do.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second it.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Ms. Hood, second. Any discussion? All three of them said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. And his family wanted to be here today. And they had an email or text based on that they could be here during this little talk we have. But they may come in September, maybe when we find out the surrogate everything that we can about this. Thank you all. I thank you very much. Our next item is County Attorney Adams. Ms. Cade, do you have anything?
I have one thing. You all heard my report. If you have any questions, I wanted to ask for your authority to advertise, to update the procurement ordinance in September, if we can.
Do you have a motion to authorize Ms. Cade to advertise this for this procurement ordinance for any time of the September meeting? Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
All right. Ms. Hearn, you made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
You're second. Any discussion? All three of them said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. All righty. And claims, Ms. Adams.
You have the claims in your packet on the green sheet. The general fund balance after the claims is $3,947,611.31. As you can see from the comparison chart, that is down from this time last year. One of the things that I believe is the reason is because of the regional jail amount. Last year, it was about $350,000 less than where we're at spending on August regional jail. So some of the early claims, of course, the AEP, Duffield Fire and Rescue Waste Management was the big one, $43,790.26. We paid that early to avoid a late fee. On your regular claims, we had some big ones this time. Some of the larger ones, Appalachian Juvenile Commission, for the first quarter was $62,527. Lonsin Pine Regional Library, first quarter, $50,762.50. Scott County Health Department, first quarter, $63,773.75. And the regional jail, first quarter, $723,569.97. So total claims for the month, including early and current, is $1,167,720.44. And that's the amount that we'll need approved.
That's one of the bigger ones I can ever remember. It's expensive. We got to be done.
Are we getting some money back from the regional jail?
We've already received it. It's not deposited yet, so it will go into the balance.
Okay. Thank you.
It came earlier this week.
Any other comments or questions for Ms. Adams? If not, we don't pay much to pay the bills. Do we have a motion?
Some, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Bree, you're second. Any discussion? All three of them said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
I do have a couple of things under miscellaneous. I emailed about the Carlson software for the mapping person. I'm requesting that you use $2,200 from board contingency to pay for the software and the first year of maintenance. That would be $2,200.
Do you have someone hired to do the mapping, correct?
Yes, and he started on Monday.
Good. That's one of the biggest, and this is to be done. And I want to hear from folks about the mapping and how bad it is. So fix all of that, that'd be great. Do we have a motion to pay this $2,200 from our contingency fund?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bree committed a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hood, second. Any discussion? All three of them said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
And then in your packet, there's a letter I received yesterday from DHCD. We have been awarded an Appalachian Regional Commission grant for Upper Cliff Mountain Water Project Phase Two in the amount of $525,000. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And also in your folder, you have a copy of our award certificate. We received a National Association of Counties Award for Stony Creek Park as an achievement award that was presented at their conference in July. So I just wanted to let you be aware of that. And I've got one other thing. It's, we're about to the point to receive opioid settlement money. And I need you to set up a fund to deposit that money into until we determine what we're going to use the funds for. That will be Fund 39. So I need you to approve the establishment of Fund 39, And all related accounts for the opioid settlement fund.
Is there restriction on what we can use in there?
There is, yes. Our first allotment from the state, or our allotment from the state, they received $4 million, some dollars. We'll be getting just a little bit over $17,000 of that. So just approval to develop Fund 39 opioid settlement fund and the related accounts that go with that.
Do we have a motion to do that?
No.
Mr. Hearn made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, second. Any discussion? All three of them said aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Let's think about it. Can we make a break?
Mine hit it one time.
I want to keep it, tell us what I'm concerned about.
...
Meeting back to order, next item is a presentation by the traditional, our PSA directors, come on Mike.
Okay.
Welcome to our meeting this morning.
Okay. Good to see everybody, hello.
See you.
Come back to the office one day.
Kinda right.
All of you are welcome to come to the PSA office.
Is the door open down there?
Uh, we'll make exceptions.
Oh, we?
Yeah. It is not open to the public, it's not open.
I didn't think it was.
We'll make exceptions if necessary, but yeah, thanks. Good question, since I'm inviting people in. But I changed the format of our report a little bit, so I hope that works for you. Just a few facts and figures, you may have seen some of these before, but I thought maybe about once a year I'd give you an update on some of these, some of this data from the PSA, number of customers, number of water customers, sewer customers, residential, non-residential, and the number of treatment plants, it's not likely going to change anytime soon, three water and three wastewater to be responsible for, and then our staffing, it's been pretty stable, very thankful for that, twenty-nine employees, most of whom are full-time, we have some key part-time folks that really help us out, then we've got a mix of office staff, plant operating staff, and construction staff, and we're very proud that sixteen of our employees, over half, well over half, have a water or wastewater operator license issued by the Commonwealth, and seven have a CDL, so kudos to our staff.
Is there not a, I'm gonna stop you right there.
That's fine, you interrupt me anytime.
I'm sorry, I just have a question, is there not a requirement on there for us to have those permits to have certified staff?
A license, yes.
License.
Yes, for treatment plants, depending on the size, you have to have a certain classification of operator license.
Okay.
But we have a lot of people who have a license who don't necessarily have to have one, they may work on several of our crew members have a water operator license, or wastewater license, we encourage them to get, so they have a better understanding of water and wastewater issues while they're out in the field. That is a very good question. So, our plants are class two and class three, so to opt to really be a true operator of that plant, you have to have a license equal to the classification of the plant, and we're good, we're good in that area. And so, on the right-hand side, and interrupt me again anytime, we have-
Sorry.
-current water and sewer, no, please do, current water and sewer construction projects, those that are under construction, those that are funded and not yet under construction, those that have been approved by the PSA Board for Development and seeking funding, and then lastly, those that are being evaluated based on our master user agreement list for future board approval and development.
That for Cliff Mountain Water Base Two has been approved, hasn't it?
Yeah, just yesterday.
Yes. It was recommended, it was on the governor's recommended list to go back to ARC, I got the letter this morning, yes. Yeah, so it's not final file, but I think it's pretty safe to say with bet that it's going to get ARC funding.
When do you anticipate the Hunters Valley West construction starting? As you say, it's under, into that-
Yeah, I've made too many promises and dates, and so, things that are out of my control are out of my control, like getting materials, and you know, last year, so when? So, we're waiting on some material, we can't start until we have all the couplings and fittings and everything to start, so we're waiting. So, I said last year, or we said last year, things can't go on like this, right? Well, they didn't, they got worse, and it's getting in some cases, for some things, harder to get materials, taking longer, we got a lot of them, but not all of them. That's the one our crew's going to construct, I think it will go fairly well, fairly quickly, and then a contractor's doing the other half of that is Robinet Valley, it's Robinet Valley, Hunters Valley West. Very frustrating, but you know, we're not going to hang our heads or cry, we're just trying to, we'll do the best we can and move on with what we can control.
I mean, what, what big issues are you running into there, just besides the-
Not having all the materials for the pipeline. Yeah, yeah. Biddings, couplings, put the pipe together.
Certain manufacturers, or just-
It's just across the board.
Yeah.
So, we let the contract out to, for materials to, to a company, that we deal with one of two companies, and that's all there are, and, and they do a great job, so they're doing the best they can, and then they have their suppliers, and so.
Cross over there.
But I think it'll be, we've got most, most everything, so I hope it won't be too long.
I think we're also having problems with not enough money where the prices has went up significantly.
Yes, sir, like on the Human Hiltons Sewer Project, due to the price increases, contractor materials, we have to go back and seek more funding from DEQ, even though we got a lot of funding from rural development for those. We also had to do that on Robinet Valley, and we were able to secure more funding.
Couple quick questions. One, okay, you just talked about the Cliff Mountain earlier.
Uh-huh.
So, there's, I understand, a temporary fix in, in the mill?
There is, up at Black Young Lane, up at Cliff Mountain Phase One, and, and so, the subcontractor who was putting in the pump station, putting in the controls with the pump station, that's the, that's the heart of the whole system, to operate those pumps and transfer switch for power and all that, he, he has worked diligently to try to get parts from his suppliers, and they don't have them, they're months away, they're not even manufactured yet, so he has come up with a plan, another way of doing it, and I admire them, Boggs Municipal Services, Willie Boggs, I admire him for, you know, finding another way and not, not giving up, and, and right now, it's, it's, so that plan, we've had a conference call with Lynn Wisco and, and our engineers and the Health Department, and went through all the concerns, because there are concerns, it's not standard, and you don't want to call, make a, cause a bigger problem trying to solve one problem, there's liability issues and public safety issues and public health with the water, and you're, you're asking people, you're telling people they can disconnect from their current supplies, even though, even if it's hauled water, they do have water in the home, so you're asking them to disconnect from that and connect to this, and we don't, we want it to be reliable. But anyway, so, our engineers have evaluated it, we have another meeting tomorrow-
With the Health Department.
So, as it stands now, it will depend on what they say.
Yeah, this is what we were talking about in the Wisco meeting the other day, okay. The other question is, I know with regard to, and not just regard to Human Hiltons, but I know we're always having easement issues and problems of that nature.
Yeah, yeah, good, very good question, and we have had issues with easement and, with easements, and I've, and that's good timing, because I've got permission from Frida, I guess she talked to the boss, I don't know.
Well, I sent an email to her, said, "Go ahead and do it," but it didn't send it now, I don't know what happened.
That's okay.
But I was fine with it.
I've got a, I've got a, I've got a PSA, PSA, and I've talked with our TV producer here, and I'll just turn here, I don't, he doesn't do makeup, so I'll, I'll just go with it like I am. But Scott County folks are great to support the PSA's water and sewer construction projects, and we are very grateful for that. One of the main areas we need that cooperation and support is getting easements across your property for our water and sewer lines. Over ninety percent of property owners on our projects are quick to grant us an easement, are very easy to work with, we appreciate those folks. My message is not only for you, the cooperative property owner, but also for the small percentage who do not cooperate and are not easy to get to sign an easement. Working with us on easements and being easy and cooperative enables our projects to go in a lot quicker. Delaying or denying easements altogether postpones our projects, or in some cases even prevents construction altogether. So, please remember that only a tiny percentage of our friends and neighbors are not being cooperative, and, and are making it more difficult to extend water and sewer services by not giving the PSA an easement for our lines. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a, it's a, it's a key, critical problem, and I appreciate that we have a history of not using another method to get property, and I, we do not want to go there, and we don't, we haven't needed to, and, and we don't, you know, we don't want to, and so, we're trying different ways, and some, some of them are working, so we're making progress.
Well, thank you, I didn't know that, that was what happened, but I think that was really great, you know, appealing to the property owners and such, and so, as you stated, it's just a handful, it seems like, and the travesty of it is, you know, sometimes you can detour a complete project or whatever, you know.
It has, it has delayed our major sewer projects by a couple of years already, because it's so important for sewer projects, because a water line, you can run it anywhere, a sewer line, you cannot. If you don't get an easement, you have to go back and redesign, you have to run it different ways, because we, we, you know, they flow, we want them to flow by gravity, we don't want to have pump stations everywhere, so we're limited, but we need those easements, and we appreciate it. The vast majority of folks could grant them, and grant them easily, quickly.
Have you ever used Rite, him in the domain, have you ever done that?
I did not even want to mention that word.
I know, but I knew you went around him, but I wasn't there.
I think I saw her.
I wouldn't have ever used it, would you have never used it? You've never used it?
We've never used it. We've never used it. Okay.
I know you bounced around it, but I'm gonna say it.
I understood what he was trying to do.
I did too, but I, you know, so. Hopefully, we never happen to that, but go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. But, okay, so, you know, just a lot of projects we're, we're working on, and, you know, projects are slow as it is, with all the permitting and the design and all the things you've got to get approved, the easements, but then you throw in price increases and material shortages, makes it hard, but we're not, we're moving ahead, we're doing, we've, we've got work to do, and we're keeping, keeping at it.
Is it getting any better, are you getting any parts in that you've been waiting for?
It's sporadic, it's very sporadic.
Is it, is it?
Occasionally, we get, you know, get a few in, they bring a few, which you don't, so you can't go out there and start laying water line, immobilize, and get started, and get your ditch dug, and you want, you got to be able to go, you got to have all the parts, you can't be pulling off and back on, it just doesn't work well that way.
So, I guess it goes back to the manufacturers, is that toward the-
Yeah, like, like Boggs is finding parts for the controls for the upper Cliff Mountain pump station, it's the manufacturers that it has, only have parts made, but I, like I said, admire Boggs, they, they've got a in-house design for a temporary system, doesn't have all the features, hopefully it will be reliable enough, but we'll see, Mark, it's, it's down to the Health Department in that case, like I said, tomorrow, we'll see what they say.
I mean, during times like this, I mean, that's when you got to have people like that to step up to the plate and try to improvise and-
That's right, yeah.
And do something.
So, we, we've had trouble getting meters. Maybe I missed that. You can't have a water system, well, a water meter. So, we've had to look at other kinds of meters. But we found some other kind, bought all we could. And they tie into our electronic radio read system fortunately. So, and we like them, so.
So, with a temporary fix for Black Gun, when the, the control panel does come in, then the water would have to be shut down and make a permanent?
Oh, when the permanent one comes in.
Right.
After, if we put the temporary one in. Yeah, they, they could probably, I think they'll have it, put it all together and so that the dam type will be minimal.
Because I know that would be a question, you know, when it happens.
Oh, yeah.
From the people in Black Gun.
Very good question. So, but they will limit that. I, I don't think it will take much time, but I have talked to them. But I can, I believe what they would do is assemble it on site. And it's not just a box. It's all kinds of electronic components and things. The other issue is that there was supposed to be a standby generator up there. There's, there's bad problem with power outages. Lee County has had a really bad problem lately. Water outages due to power outages at pump stations. So, I don't think we're going to be able to have a standby generator. And that's, I think that's one of the things the Health Department is going to look at. But when the power goes out, they won't have water up there.
Well, they didn't before either because they had wells.
Yeah, that's true.
That's a problem with the well. When you lose power, you don't have water.
That's true. Yes.
Was that not included with the, when we first?
Yeah, it's included. It's included with the, with the proof design.
Okay, the total, man.
But, but this alternative temporary.
I see.
I understand that we're not have a generator, not have a transfer switch for a portable generator.
So, a quick question back on the Stony Creek or the Hunter's Valley.
Yes, yes.
One of the residents there said they brought in pipe up there.
We've.
Taken some pipe up there.
Yeah.
And what about the bridge and having to go under the, what's the plan there?
There, there is, we have to, Corps of Engineers and DEQ and all that is for our environment. Is making us directional board under Big Stone Creek. This is even though in fourteen or fifteen downstream at Memphis Camp, our crew drenched across Big Stone Creek. And there were no, they allowed us to do that. But now upstream a little ways, they will not allow us to do that. So, this is a very expensive proposition to directionally board under, under a stream like that. But there is a contractor that is doing, that's a specialty construction deal. So, as a contractor's, we're subcontractor to the, to the contractor for Rodnet Valley is doing that. But that's not going to hold up our construction. Once we get our materials, we will start laying line. And that's why they've already moved pipe up there. So, we, we're trying to do everything we can to be ready when everything comes in. But we'll lay the line and then hopefully by the time we're done, they will have gone under Big Stone and be, be able to connect to our existing water main up there at the, near the intersection.
I know it happens regularly, but VDOT wouldn't allow you to attach it to that bridge.
That's what I was gonna say. That bridge is not, you can't attach to that bridge.
Yeah, no.
Is that not feasible?
No, we'll, we, we try that whenever we can, but, but no, we had to, couldn't go on the bridge. Had to go in the creek. We do have one on the bridge, one at North Fork, at Wallow Gap. They did allow us that. But, you know, they're very particular.
Well, I know. Fluff Railroad is the only thing.
Yeah, yeah. So, speaking of railroad, we, we, we feel like we're on the right track with these projects. But, but, but you'll get run over if you just sit there. So, so we're trying not to just sit there on the tracks. Even though we're on the right track. So, we're moving ahead wherever we can. And we're not stopping the project development. The, the agencies are still considering projects and we're applying. We've applied this summer for Central Scott, two more phases of the Central Scott Water Project. And we're waiting, waiting now to hear about the funding offers on those. And we're even moving into Tennessee. So, I don't know if you saw that. But they've asked us to lay a water line to a community, Pink Hill. The problem with Pink Hill is they have red water. And that's a project that's been in the works for two decades. Since early two thousands. They've got ARPA money down in Tennessee. They've got no other source of water but us, so. If they get the money, we will build it and own it and operate it at a cost of less than nine thousand dollars per house. Which is, we haven't seen prices like that since the nineteen nineties. Just because there's a cluster of forty to fifty homes. It'd be a win-win for the PSA and our customers and for those folks in Pink Hill.
Going back to the Black Gun.
Yes, sir.
Lane, you know, they were here last month. Something I'm talking about that.
Yeah.
And is, is there, let's say the Health Department says no. What's the plan then?
Well, they will stay on their existing water supply. And as I understand, five, four, five or six of them, they're hauling water. They, so they've got water in their houses, but it's, it's being hauled by, one guy's hauling his own and then the fire department's hauling some. And then the vast majority of them have their wells. They're still working. And so, as far as the citizens up there, they'll hopefully be able to continue the way they are in and out. And the, and then the subcontractor will continue to try to get parts in as quick as he can from these suppliers.
Where, where is the supply? Who's the manufacturer, do you know? Is it in the United States?
I've seen emails, but I don't know where.
I think it's in Kingsport. I could be mistaken.
I've seen the emails.
Oh, there.
Where he's trying to get a response, but I don't know.
It's a distributor, I think, in Kingsport.
Yeah, but the manufacturers, you know, they could be in Mexico. I don't, they're all over the place.
It is the distributor in Kingsport.
Is there more than one manufacturer?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there was. I think you've seen the emails too. I think there's maybe five or six different parts and different manufacturers.
I mean, if you couldn't get it from one, I mean, is, is it all dried up?
No, I don't, you know, I, I don't know all the details. But, but I just know that Willard Boggs is doing all he can to try to get those parts. But we'll see. But is this temporary measure to be approved? And then hopefully it will work well. And, and then, so I think the plan is for those folks that are getting hauled water to be the only ones that connect to this temporary measure. The rest of them would need to stay on their wells until the permanent control panel is in.
So, we'll have a generator when we get the permanent.
Yes.
Set up. We'll, we'll have the generator and everything that they need to have water continually.
Yes.
I think about this every day of my life. I so want those people to have their water.
Well, the ones, the ones without water, I mean, that, you know.
I mean, can you imagine two and a half years without water?
I've bought well water and, you know, when our electricity goes out, that's when we don't have water. But, but I do have water, but they, some of them, they don't have any. They don't, and that's hard for me to imagine that we live where we do and they don't have water.
Yeah, the fire department's been good to haul the water. So, they've got their, those toques tied into their pump station.
The fire department though is, is being strange, burning things.
So, they've, they've got.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we, we.
And it's piped into their homes.
Right, right.
But I, I would just think, you know, I'm thinking, when we go to the grocery store, for example. There've been a lot of foods that have changed in our local stores. You know, we, we used to see in the shelves that are not there. There's another name brand, you know, that's there. For whatever reason, I don't know for business, our manufacturer place, it closed down or whatever. But I would think, you know, I think Mike, I'm sure you're doing, you know, all that you can do. I'm sure it would be concerning, you know, for the engineers. If you have whatever particular part or supply. If it's, if the line has frozen up this direction from where it comes from, can we not get this part, you know, from another direction? Find out, you know, and hopefully this.
They've, they've, they've tried. And back to Black Gun, let me, I, I think I need, probably need to minimize my role. I'm not, the PSA per se is not directly involved, right? You know, I, I want to give credit to Rebecca Crockett at Lynn Whisco and Crossroads Engineering. They're the ones that have been working a lot on this. But, and the contractors. So, you know, our crew and the engineers are doing the pump stand, putting the pump station, plumbing it together. But as far as dealing with this hassle, I've, you know, they consult with me and I, but they're the ones that are doing the work. The engineers have spent a lot of time and Rebecca Crockett as well.
I bought a, last year, I, I really haven't bought it. I made a down payment. It's, it's, it's a cross with a star in it.
Oh.
A ten-foot cross.
Okay.
Okay. Which is supposed to have been already ready, which is not. And, but there's a controller.
Yeah.
And so, you can see where this is going.
Yeah.
And of course, I don't have to mention any business names or anything like that. It's not from around here. Of course, they'd like to get the rest of the money from me. And, but, you know, I'm not giving the rest of the money until I figure out where, where my part's coming from.
Yeah.
So, I think this is a wide, you know, widespread issue. It's affecting us in a lot of different ways. And, you know, if I pay the money, if I pay, I pay the rest of the money now, then that takes a, kind of the money off of the, the burden off of the, you know, the, the business is back in order to try to help, you know, get the parts. So, the supply is a, a big problem with a lot of, in a lot of different areas, really. But we've got to try to.
Scott County PSA has to slow down. We're still selling water.
All right, that's good.
Still taking that wastewater and treating it. And we're full staffed and so.
Mr. Dishman, are these control panels very unique per project or is it? Or not? I, I mean, I, I just wonder, like, Black Gun, I mean, they're waiting for parts for the control panel. And I've not seen a spec sheet or anything on it.
I can't, I can't comment. Oh, I don't know that much about electronics, but I, I think, I think there's some, there's always customization in each one. There's a little, there's a little different. There are different sizes. There's different pressures they're dealing with. There's different flow rates. So, I know there's, they're all a little different.
So, it would be unique per project probably or somewhat unique?
Yes.
Okay. Back to the, sorry, the Hunter's Valley.
No, no problem.
So, when we, let's say you have all of the equipment or you have all of the parts ordered next week. Are all the permits in place and have already been established so that there's no more delays or will that be another?
Yes, the.
Everything's already ready to go except for the parts. Is that correct?
That is, that is, that, oh yeah.
Will there be a permitting process?
We are waiting on final permitting from DEQ for, runoff, the environmental permit. But we've answered all their comments and a few rounds of comments. And they put us through the ringer. And so, now we're just waiting on their approval there. So, that one. And, and then the final VDOT permit. But we, they basically proved it. We're just waiting to pay the fee. So, we don't want to pay the fee for the VDOT permit, which started around the last year or so. Yeah, but, but yeah, that's also a good question, so.
So, when they, when you do get that tied on, do the folks up through Hunter's Valley, will they have to pay a fee to? Is that included in the grant or do they have to pay a fee?
Yeah, we'll, so they get a zero, a tap fee for nothing, a tap for nothing. And we'll send out a notice when the project is completed, tell them what to do, take care of their paperwork at the office, set up an account. And they pay a fifty dollar deposit that all customers have to pay. And they have to pay a fifty dollar administrative fee, set up their account, which all customers have to pay.
So, a total of a hundred bucks?
Hundred bucks. With a normal fifteen hundred dollar cap fee is, is waived.
Okay.
Because it was on a project and.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's if they signed a user agreement.
If they, right, thank you. If they sign a user agreement. Yeah. And it's not too late to sign a user agreement for Hunter's Valley West and Rodnet Valley.
You want water, it better be signed.
They have to have it signed before the project starts.
Supposed to have it signed before the project starts. Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay. I'm done. Sorry.
Hey, thank you for your view, Mr. Dishman.
You don't apologize because you all are asking good questions.
Well, I'm getting asked questions, so I'm asking.
Yeah, your, your, your people are asking good questions.
They do.
But on the Black Gun part, is there anything we can do as a board if they say no? What, what, what can, because those people, I know they've, they've got water, but that's not drinking water. Is that right?
Let's just wait and see what they say.
Okay.
Let's just wait and see what they say. And if they have concerns, let's just wait and see what their concerns are.
Okay. Can you let Ms. Starnes know or somebody, she can let us know or however you want to handle that?
Yeah.
Because that, that to me, I might, we need to.
Because I don't know what the concerns, I mean, they may have a concern that you would agree with. I don't know. We'll see.
Well, we just need to, I don't like to use the word, but pressure on, like, to get those parts, but, you know, I.
Having worked there, I don't think there's anything.
Yeah.
I've tried pressuring.
Yeah.
When's the meeting or when are they making the decision?
We have a conference call tomorrow. I don't know if they'll decide tomorrow, but we had a conference call last week. And so, we, we've addressed the issues and questions. So, we'll have a conference call tomorrow and go over them.
I, I mean, on, on the manufacturer people, you know, trying to find it. It's hard to understand that one part, I know it's a vital part. Is that shutting down the entire United States water projects or? You know, that's, that's where I'm getting at. I mean, surely somewhere in the United States that part is.
Well.
And somebody might not need it right now.
Well, the, the problem is that the, the, the design was approved by the Health Department. If you ever front that, then they got to get back involved in it. And I didn't understand that. You think it'd be about, about quality. But there, but this design was designed a certain way. If you deviate from that, then they got to approve it. It's approved system with what you proposed to do.
Exactly, yeah.
But if the spec was approved, then you could take that spec sheet and a company could, could make it. It would be approved. Because I said that's what the Health Department. Cause I said, that's what the Health Department approves, is the specification.
An equal, an equal item, yeah.
Yep, good one.
All right, somebody's notice, don't mind.
I always look forward to your coming, Mr. Dishman. You give us a lot of.
Try not to, pressure on me, I don't know, try not to let you down next time. With a lot going on, I'm trying to, seeing if you're trying to think of what other juicy news I can tell you. It's hot.
Appreciate you, yeah.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck to you all.
Thank you.
All righty.
Ms. Brinkley, you want to mention it? I feel bad for her.
We'll go to comments here right now, if you.
Can we do that?
Yeah, we, we do have short hour of conversation with this comment.
I just have another question. I mean, I know, when was the last time that we done anything for Duffield hauling the water in there? Do you remember? Has it been a while?
At, at least last year, if not the year before.
I know the prices of gas have gone up, so they're hauling water, and it's costing, you know, I'm sure that's more expensive for them to, for the, but they're, but they're still doing it.
I think a couple times a week.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be, I think we need to do something for Duffield.
Help offset the fuel cost.
To help offset that, that cost, because they are continuing to help those people on Black Gun. And I mean, I think that's important that we, I mean, I know, and they're incurring their own cost, right? So they're just kind of doing that out of the goodness of their own heart. And that they're, you know, as they can.
You have something in mind?
I, I mean, I don't, I mean, I have no idea. What we, what did, do y'all remember what we did last time? Cause if I haven't seen it.
I can find out if you want to, you know.
Yeah.
Do comments and let me.
Yeah, let's do that, let's do comments and then.
I'll check with Amy, she's in her office.
Okay, that'll be great.
Mr. Jeter, everything?
Uh, thank the staff and board for the good job they do, that's all I got.
Mr. Jeter?
I would echo the same thing as Mr. Jeter did, I would, uh, and then I got a phone call yesterday from someone that, uh, about trees that are on the road on Tri-State and Boozy Creek. They had put in work orders before to have just taken care of. They've never come out and looked at it, so hopefully something can be set or done to help with VDOT to get up and take care of the situation.
Mr. Denton, are these standing trees with limbs in the road, or are they fallen trees?
These are fallen trees.
Habs?
Uh, that's all I have.
Mr. Herron?
Appreciate what everybody does. Uh, you know, back several months ago, I don't know if it was January or whatever, we used some of the ARPA money to, uh, help payroll for the EMS, and we pretty much based it on, I think, a six-month deal. Uh, those six months have passed, I think, if we did it in January. Uh, we need to, and we may need to look at that as an ARPA committee, or however you think we're needing to do that.
They still have money remaining, they've not used all that.
Okay, yep. But we need to, you know, that's, that's, that's something definitely we need to look at next budget year, uh, because that ARPA money's gonna be gone. Uh, and we won't have that anymore, so, uh, you know, that's a, they, they are providing a vital service to them and the fire departments both, so, uh, if, if we as a county should have to take over all that, it would be millions of dollars that we would have to try to come up with, so, uh, any, any way we can help them. Uh, but, uh, so I guess we need to keep track of what money they have in that, if we need to.
Yeah, but I believe they still have ninety thousand.
Okay, all right. Well, they've not, how, how much was it originally?
One sixty.
Okay, oh, that's good.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Brick?
Uh, I just want to say congratulations, brag on our chairman, Mr. Mann, for being appointed to, can you not help me, to any Virginia mine safety committee?
Coal Mine Safety Board.
Coal Mine Safety Board, uh, Governor, uh, Yankton, anytime that, you know, any time that we can get a voice into Richmond or farther, especially with our resources such as coal, we're, we need to do that. And, and thanks again to our staff and to our local media people who send this out to the public. I think that helps a lot, that people can see what we're doing and maybe what we're up against. But that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jeter?
I don't have any comments.
Mr. Addams?
Still trying to get used to hearing that.
It's easy, I'm reading.
I just thank the staff for everything, and, you know, we, we've had a few meetings through the month for some, some activities for, uh, you know, up on Stoney Creek and things. And I appreciate everybody's input and, and working together to, to, to help make this a, a good thing. I guess that's all I have.
Uh, Dave Gill was here, uh, Life saving crew, and he mentioned that they're having issues, uh, getting people to, uh, even paid staff, they just, uh, you just can't get them. Uh, so anyway, they even advertising the paper was zero. People responded, uh, to trying to get people to help with things. We're very blessed to have our volunteer fire departments, uh, and the, the paid services, the EMS. We, uh, we're very blessed to have them, so I don't listen on the go, it's hard to get people to work. On another item, I've got a bunch of phone calls. People, uh, didn't get in to the Board of Equalization, and they want us to do something differently, and I tell them there's nothing we can do, this is done by ordinance, it's, uh, we can't. I've heard every excuse in the world why they didn't get in. We spent a lot of money to get the mailers out, and I asked, what could we do differently to make sure that you got it in? And they don't know either. They're on vacation, they just didn't pay attention to it or something, and I hate it. I hate that they, and I'm sure they get, have open appointments, but this is done by ordinance, we, we cannot undo that. We said, okay, go ahead, give them an appointment. And the some are pretty upset because they didn't get in, and I don't know how you make it, uh, towards easier for them to get an appointment and see exactly how the guidelines are laid out. We get the information out. We tried it again with the mailers, so they have it in their hand, the appointment deadlines and so on, and there's still some fell through the cracks. So anyway, if they see this, um, you know, when they watch it, for YouTube or the local TV channel, whatever, that we cannot undo that. Uh, it has to be done. We'll have our meeting back here on August the twenty-fourth to, uh.
September seventh, we had to change that.
Oh, I forgot September seventh, sorry. Uh, but anyway, we're doing the best we can with this, and all this is done by ordinance, we, we cannot undo this. Through the advertising, through the vote, through everything we do, we cannot undo that and make it sensitive to certain people. And I know they have, some may have legitimate reason why they didn't call and get an appointment. And I hate it for them, but anyway, uh, there's nothing we can do to undo that. All righty, if nothing else, we do have, uh, an item for a close session. Let me read this, and, uh, all right, before going into closed session, uh, we have one item on a motion, lead a motion to go in a close session.
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
This is more hereby entered to close session, present Virginia Code Sec two point two, dice three, seven, one, one. And choosing the one that it is, let me find it here, it is two, two. Item three, uh, real estate, and so we need a vote to go in, do we have a motion?
No trades, harvests or appropriations.
All right, we need to certify the closed meeting. For as the Scott County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affir- an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And for as section two point two dice three seven one two, under the code of Virginia requires a certification by the Scott County Board of Supervisors, such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the Scott County Board of Supervisors hereby certify that to best of each member's knowledge, all the public matters lawfully exempted from public meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed. In the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies, and number two, all of such business matters, as were identified in the motion convened to close meeting, where heard, discussed, are considered by the Scott County Board of Supervisors, need a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second, and a roll call of the members.
Mr. Jeter?
Yes.
Mr. Tipton?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Bricky?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
Ms. Hood?
Yes.
Ms. Addington?
Yes.
All right, we are back in open session, and, uh, and one item, Ms. Starnes, to get through.
The last time that you, um, gave money to Duffield Fire and Rescue for hauling water to Black Gun was on September seventeenth, twenty twenty. So it's been two years, and that amount was two thousand dollars.
Can we do that again? It's up to you, I mean, does somebody have a number in mind? I mean, we have, how much is in our contingency? I mean, we've got four.
Fifty thousand, plus you took twenty-two hundred off, and I think a thousand last month, so let's say forty-five thousand.
Okay. You want to do, I mean, you want to do five?
Five hundred, five thousand.
You want to do twenty-five hundred?
Well.
I don't know, somebody give me a.
This should be big. Very quick, and then, I mean, if we, hopefully within the next few weeks, they'll have water.
Okay.
If you want to do two thousand again, that's, uh.
Let's do that. I'll make a motion, we provide two thousand dollars to Duffield Fire and Rescue for hauling water to Black Gun.
From our contingency.
From our contingency.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second on the, on this, uh, any discussion? All members, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. I think they will appreciate that, and they've been very loyal to, uh, take care of the folks up there, so.
One thing about the Duffield Fire and Rescue, I guess this is still the case, I haven't done this lately, but if you order from Amazon, you can have money sent to the Duffield Fire and Rescue. It's not a lot, but you know.
Amazon cares, is that what it is?
Or Amazon cares?
Yeah, Am- Amazon cares, and what you buy from Amazon, I mean, I used to be a big Amazon buyer, I'm not so much now, but, but I always, you know, used the care for Duffield Fire and Rescue.
Uh, one other thing, there's going to be a phone call with FEMA at two o'clock, uh, Ms. Kegel will be involved in it, and it's on the, uh, the property on Stony Creek, I thought the county owns, it's concerning that. Uh, I, I've got to be in a training session from one thirty to three thirty, so I need two people, two of y'all that would be able to, uh, participate in, in that and, uh, and help Ms. Kegel with that. Do we have two volunteers?
I'll be willing to do it.
Okay, and what else?
What is?
It has to be two people, it'd be more than two.
What is it?
The phone call with FEMA about dealing with the Stony Creek property, uh, some of the guidelines has, has changed on it, and they're going to discuss that.
And that's tomorrow?
Not today.
So do I.
Today at two o'clock. Mr. Bricky will, anybody else? Ms. Marshall, you will? Thank y'all for doing that, and, uh, so anyway, only two can do it, two people, so thank you all for doing that. Anything else before we adjourn? If not, we'll be back here on September the seventh, uh, two thousand twenty-two, for other comments, this meeting is hereby adjourned.
Coming in a moment, Sean.
Yeah.